hearing to order. This is an ordinance concerning the Fair Rent Commission and we will begin with roll call, Mr. Davidoff.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Good evening.
Counselor Blanks.
Present.
Mayor Cantor.
Here.
Counselor Cortez.
Here.
Counselor Fay.
Present.
Counselor McGinnis.
Present.
Counselor Pullen.
Here.
Counselor Walters.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Winograd.
Here.
Counselors Zedanowicz.
Here.
Thank you, Mr. Davidoff. Mr. Ledwith, presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, everyone. For the record, Rick Ledwith, Town Manager. The town's Fair Rent Commission is charged with conducting hearings to address complaints of unreasonable rent increases. Our current Fair Rent Commission is comprised of seven individuals who volunteer a significant amount of time preparing for these hearings and conducting those hearings in Town Hall. Members currently serve two term, two-year terms that expire simultaneously. The structure has led to turnover that affects continuity and knowledge retention. The proposed ordinance allows the commission to transition to staggered three-year terms for members, similar to the structure of the town's other boards and commissions. It also ensures continuity and makes sure that we have ongoing experience in the, on the commission, which means institutional memory and enhances the quality of the hearings. Another component of the proposed ordinance is the addition of alternate members. When the town schedules a Fair Rent Commission hearing, it needs to happen on the date scheduled because we have a court reporter coming in and two parties, sometimes represented by attorneys, prepared to argue their respective cases. At times, it is hard to get a quorum as our commission sometimes has unforeseen scheduling conflicts. The benefit of including alternates on the commission is that it gives the town greater ability to handle scheduling conflicts, so hearings do not have to be canceled due to a lack of quorum and provides more opportunity for residents to get involved and be able to contribute to the commission on an as-needed basis. So that concludes the changes to the ordinance that's the, that is subject to tonight's hearing. Through you, Madam Mayor. Happy to answer any questions that the council had.
Thank you, Mr. Ledwith. Are there questions or comments? I know this was discussed in committee, but are there any questions or comments for the Town Manager? All right, and Mr. Davidoff, did we have any written comments?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, and anybody sign? We have a sign up, but I think it's not to this or to Meg Mashad, but I, so I think it's to the, so it's going to be, he's going to speak at the council meeting. So that's, so we're just going to amend that, okay? All right, and again, any questions for the council? Okay, I want to thank Mr. Ledwith. I also, I want to thank Attorney Latour, Cynthia Latour, who does a lot of great work with this commission and it is very, very important, serves a really important purpose for so many of our residents and our, and our, our housing owners as well. So, all right, seeing none, one last time. This public hearing is closed and the next public hearing will begin at seven twenty-five. Thank you. Okay, I'm calling the seven twenty-five public hearing to order. This is an ordinance concerning the Director of Emergency Management. We will begin with roll call, Mr. Davidoff.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Counselor Blanks.
Present.
Mayor Cantor.
Here.
Counselor Cortez.
Here.
Counselor Fay.
Present.
Counselor McGinnis.
Present.
Counselor Pullen.
Here.
Counselor Walters.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Winograd.
Here.
Counselors Zedanowicz.
Here.
Thank you, Mr. Davidoff. We will go to, turn to our Town Manager, Mr. Ledwith, for presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For the record, Rick Ledwith, Town Manager. This ordinance change is a housekeeping item that pertains to our Office of Emergency Management. As the council knows, that is a term that we've been using for many years now. However, in our ordinance, we refer to this position as the Director of Civil Defense, a very outdated term. So the passing of this ordinance change would amend any reference to civil defense in the ordinance to emergency management. And that may be the shortest presentation in public hearing history.
Now the question, now, now we have to see if there are any questions. It might not be. Are there any questions for the Town Manager?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Oh, boy, all right. Ms. Pullen?
Through you. What, this has been on the books for a long time, so what caused us to suddenly take a look at this and figure out that we needed to rename?
Our Fire Chief, who many of us know very, very well, has a tendency to look at the details at an extreme level and picked up on this and something that we've just overlooked for, for a few years, so.
Thank you, and thank you to Chief Priest, who I'm sure is watching.
Thank you, Ms. Pullen. And we are a busy town and sometimes we are caught in our, our patterns and, you know, sometimes it takes a new set of eyes or something. All right, any written comments, Mr. Davidoff?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, and a sign up sheet, I doubt there's anything. Okay, no one has signed up to speak. Is there anybody here that would like to speak to this? Okay, and if there's no further questions from the council, one more time, this public hearing is now closed. We will begin the council meeting in two minutes. Thank you. Okay, we are now at seven thirty. Okay, this Tuesday, December tenth, seven thirty Town Council meeting, calling it to order, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Davidoff.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Counselor Blanks.
Present.
Mayor Cantor.
Here.
Counselor Cortez.
Here.
Counselor Fay.
Here.
Counselor McGinnis.
Present.
Counselor Pullen.
Here.
Counselor Walters.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Winograd.
Here.
Counselors Zedanowicz.
Here.
I am going to start with a moment of reflection and, and again, just, just give me a little, a little grace here, but West Hartford tragically had another pedestrian fatality last week. This is Anne Rapkin, who, who died. She was known as a brilliant giving person who made an extraordinary impact on many lives. She and her, her dog were struck at Sedgwick and Cornell Road about six forty-five PM the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. The loss of a pedestrian in this recent, most recent accident has left a void that cannot be filled. I can't tell you how torn up many of us at this table are, and I know our Town Manager in particular. And our hearts go out to the family and friends who are grieving from this profound loss and all of those who were impacted by it. We had three families that were impacted by this loss. The incident serves as a stark reminder of the fragility of life and the importance of road safety. We must come together to reflect on our shared responsibility to ensure that our streets are safe for everyone, pedestrians, cyclists, and drivers alike. Each one of us plays a role in fostering a culture of awareness and respect on our roads, and I would ask that we all work together to achieve zero deaths and zero serious injuries by 2033. Okay, and I'm just going to say, just, let's just take a few seconds to just reflect. Thank you all. All right, public forum. We do have somebody signed up to speak on an agenda item. So, Mr. Mashad, I saw that you signed up, and we'll see if there's anybody else signed up as well. Just state the item on the agenda that you're speaking to and state your name and address.
Need to hit anything here? My name is Mike Mashad. I live at forty-one Hammock Road in town. I am the Executive Director of the Miracle League of Connecticut, and I'm also here representing the West Hartford Little League. I'm here to speak in favor of the town accepting the donation of the property of seventeen hundred Asylum Avenue, the ball fields. It's a long overdue resolution to our ongoing problem there of first five-year leases, then six-month leases, and all of the uncertainty that has gone along with that. It is the best resolution possible in our minds, and I want to thank Mr. Ledwith, Mayor Cantor, and all of the Town Council members who've worked hard to bring this to fruition finally. I would be remiss, though, if we did not put on record our continuing concerns about the parking that is going to be assigned to the park area, specifically the lack of parking. It's going to be a limited number of spaces, and in the original plan, as I discussed at the first public hearing about this, the three handicap or wheelchair accessible spots are just not going to cut it, which means that's going to be even less parking if we add spots to that. The Miracle League Field, as you know, is a facility that was built for people with disabilities, so to have the bare minimum of ADA requirement for spaces there is just not a great idea in my mind, and hopefully in yours, and we'll be addressing that. Mr. Ledwith and I have had discussions about it. The other part is, I am under the understanding that there is a resolution to some of the overflow parking with cooperation of St. Joseph's University. We still do have concerns about that plan as it's a lengthy walk to get to the park and to our fields and people, especially in my mind, representing the Miracle League, people who have children with, especially on the autism spectrum, who are known to bolt and, and kind of run out of parents' control, walking along Asylum Avenue, one of the busiest streets in town. So while the, the resolution is wonderful and I'm happy that it will finally be in the town's hands, I think we do need to keep in mind and address those concerns still. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mashad. Is there anybody else who wants to speak to something on the agenda? Okay, we will go to consent calendar. Mr. Winograd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Without objection, I move that items five A, seven L through seven JJ, and ten A through ten F be placed on the consent calendar.
Is there any objection? Hearing, no objection. The items are placed on consent. Mr. Winograd.
I move to adopt the consent calendar.
Second. Motion's been made at second. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So we will go to six A, Mr. Winograd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to adopt an ordinance concerning the Fair Rent Commission.
Second. Motion's been made at second. And this was part, subject to a public hearing immediately prior to this council meeting, Mr. Ledwith, if you could give us a quick overview.
Sure, Madam Mayor. Thank you. This was, as the mayor said, the subject of a public hearing earlier this evening, proposing changes to our Fair Rent Commission ordinance. That will do a few things. It'll stagger the terms of members. It will increase the terms of members from two years to three years, and it will also allow us to add alternate members to this commission as well, which will be very helpful for the commission moving forward to help those in need of rental assistance. So, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Ledwith, and I just want to say that this commission has been, was sort of was not very active for a while and, and was built up over time, and I really want to thank all of the volunteers that serve on this commission. It's a very, very important service. And I think these recommendations are extremely helpful. I also want to thank our attorney, Cynthia Latour, who serves and helps with this commission and was important in providing these recommendations so that this commission can function much more efficiently and serve our community more effectively. So, any comments or questions? Okay, we will go to a roll call vote. Mr. Davidoff.
Counselor Blanks?
Yes.
Mayor Cantor.
Yes.
Counselor Cortez.
Yes.
Counselor Fay.
Yes.
Counselor McGinnis.
Yes.
Counselor Pullen.
Yes.
Counselor Walters.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Winograd.
Yes.
Counselors Zedanowicz.
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Thank you, Mr. Davidoff. Six B, Mr. Winograd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to adopt a resolution concerning the Director of Emergency Management.
Second. Motion's been made at second. And Mr. Ledwith, quick summary.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This public hearing involved the changing of the word, term "civil defense" in our emergency management ordinance to emergency management. Anywhere it's, it was articulated within the ordinance, we would change "civil defense" to "emergency management director." So that was the extent of that public hearing and those changes to this particular ordinance. Through you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Ledwith. Any questions or comments? Okay, voice vote for this one as well, Mr. Davidoff.
Counselor Blanks.
Yes.
Mayor Cantor.
Yes.
Counselor Cortez.
Yes.
Counselor Fay.
Yes.
Counselor McGinnis.
Yes.
Counselor Pullen.
Yes.
Counselor Walters.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Winograd.
Yes.
Counselors Zedanowicz.
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Thank you, Mr. Davidoff. And then letter C, Mr. Winograd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to adopt a resolution authorizing the Town Manager accept, to accept the donation of seventeen hundred Asylum Avenue.
Second. Ah, sorry, motion, motion has been made at second. And Mr. Ledwith, you can address, and then I'm sure you might want to incorporate some of Mr. Mashad's concern.
Absolutely, thank you, Madam Mayor. We are equally as thrilled to announce that the Weha Development Group East LLC has generously donated the ball fields, including the cherished Miracle League Field, to our town. This gift represents a significant contribution to our community, providing a lasting space where residents of all ages and abilities can come together to enjoy sports and recreation. where residents of all ages and abilities can come together to enjoy sports and recreation. The Miracle League in particular holds a special place in our hearts as it serves our youth with disabilities, offering an inclusive environment to participate in sports. With this permanent gift, we can continue to strengthen our commitment to accessibility, inclusivity, and community togetherness for generations to come. I have, when I first started in this position back in February of '22, I was within a few weeks of starting. I had met with the developer, with our team, and they had made the purchase of both 1700 and 1800 Asylum. And I think I had a conversation with the Executive Director, Mr. Mashad, around the same time about parking at that field. And we were also talking through the leasing problems that Mr. Mashad referred to in his comments that we've had over the years. So I do want to say that the developer, from really day one, had been committed to, knowing the importance of these fields, had been committed to ensuring that these fields at some point would end up in our possession, in our ownership. And it took a couple of years, but we're very pleased to be here today. As we all know, that developer did sell a portion of 1700 to Garden Homes. And we had a presentation from Garden Homes a couple of months ago where that project was approved. And these fields were as important to Garden Homes as they are to us and to the developers. And they've incorporated access to the fields from that development on 1700 Asylum. And we will continue to work with Mr. Mashad's concerns around parking, and particularly around handicap parking. We will work with the Miracle League to increase the number of spots that we have at that one side, while we continue to work with University of St. Joe's on a solution to provide additional parking, taking into consideration Mr. Mashad's comments around making, you know, the move from that parking lot to the fields. We will come up with a creative solution. We always do, and we'll continue to keep the council updated as we move through that process. Through you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Ledweth. And I really want to thank you for your persistence and your focus on this, because this was top of your mind and a real priority. So are there any other, and I want to thank Mr. Mashad for all of his work with Miracle, the Miracle League, and Little League. You have changed lives, and you've made an incredible difference. And we hear you, and we understand that these are concerns, and we will do our best to alleviate those concerns. Any questions? Mr. Cortez.
Just a comment, you know, and I want to reiterate how special this little treasure we have in our town. It has touched many lives in our community in a positive way. My oldest son has played in the Miracle League before. So just seeing firsthand, you know, what the abilities that these individuals have, you know, even though different. And it's good to see that we, you know, there's not that limbo that we've had, you know, over the past years of what's going on with that UConn property and how is it going to impact that, you know. So I'm looking forward to finally putting, you know, being at ease. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cortez. Well said. Any other comments? Okay. Then this is a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now we go to new business, 7A. Mr. Winogre.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Without objection, I move that we receive an application filed on behalf of Vessel RE Holdings LLC and Vessel Technologies, Inc., contractor purchaser of 29 Highland Street for change of zone of approximately 2.3 acres of the site from an RI Single Family Zone to an R1, rather, Single Family Zone to an RM1 Multi-Family Residence District with Special Development District designation overlay for the redevelopment of the site into a new 112-unit multi-family residential development, which will qualify as a set aside development under general statutes, Section 830G. Associated parking and sedimentities are also proposed. So I move to receive the application, refer to Town Plan and Zoning Commission, Design Review Advisory Commission, Capital Region Council for Governments, and the City of Hartford for their required review, and set for public hearing on January 28, 2024 at 6:30 PM. No second? No second.
Oh. Is there any objection? Sorry about that. My bad. There being no objection, the motion is adopted. Letter B, Mr. Winogre.
This is town manager.
So first, I will go to the town manager, and then we will have a motion. So, Mr. Ledweth?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have two ordinances before you this evening related to our pension plan for Item B and Item C. There's two minor timing issues that we are dealing with right here. So we would request respectfully to withdraw these two ordinances this evening, and we would present these ordinances at our first meeting in January and refer for a public hearing for the second meeting in January.
Thank you, Mr. Ledweth. Okay. Mr. Winogre.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Without objection, I move to withdraw the ordinance admitting the pension plan to allow for multiple primary and contingent beneficiary designations from the agenda.
Is there any objection? All right. There being no objection, the motion is adopted. Letter C.
Thank you. Without objection, I'm...
Well, I think, I just want to say the town manager is speaking both for B and C. So just to highlight that, and then, Mr. Winogre, go ahead.
Thank you. Without objection, I move to withdraw the ordinance admitting the pension plan to allow for a refund of contributions to the pension plan from the agenda.
Is there any objection? All right. There being no objection, the motion is adopted. Now, letter D, Mr. Winogre.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Without objection, I move that we receive and refer a resolution accepting 2649 to 2679 Albany Avenue Service Driveway as a public street, and refer the resolution to TPZ for their required review.
Is there any objection? Okay. There being no objection, the motion is adopted. And now we go to letter E. Mr. Winogre.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to adopt a resolution revising the schedule of fees for Rockledge Golf Club and Buena Vista Golf Course.
Second. Motion's been made in second. And Mr. Ledweth?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The presentation of this resolution follows, as always, a very thorough review of operational costs affecting our golf courses. As we know, Rockledge and Buena Vista are valued community assets that serve as a source of pride for West Hartford, and maintaining a first-class golf facility requires resources, as we're all aware. We continue to face rising costs in areas of maintenance, equipment, and staffing expenses that are essential to ensuring a high-quality experience for all of our golfers. At the same time, our director and her team have studied fee structures of neighboring towns and found that a modest fee adjustment would allow us to remain competitive with par golf courses in the area. You may recall, last year, we did increase the seasonal passes, but we did not increase the green fees at those times, at that time. This year, we will propose increasing our greens fees at Rockledge across all categories by $2 a round. We would also increase the season pass by $100 for full privileged passes to 1,650. And then we would increase the senior pass to 1,300. Both of those increases would result in an increase in revenue of about $97,000 to offset our expenses. For Buena Vista, we would increase the greens fees by $1 and across categories and season, and we would increase the season pass by $15, and this would result in an additional $14,000 in revenue. This was discussed at a recent Human and Community Services Committee meeting, but through you, Madam Mayor, happy to answer any questions that the council had.
Thank you, Mr. Ledweth. I want to start with Ms. Poland, who chairs our Human and Leisure Services Committee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a very modest increase, as the town manager has just explained to us. This strikes a balance between raising additional revenue that we need to support costs for water, maintaining our beautiful courses, and helping to ensure that we have adequate staff, and also ensuring that we don't raise fees so high that we are no longer competitive with our neighboring courses. So I would urge my colleagues to support this.
Too many people. So, thank you, Ms. Poland. Are there any other comments or questions on this? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Letter F, Mr. Winogre.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to adopt a resolution appropriating funds in the Capital Nonrecurring Expenditure Fund to the Board of Education.
Second. Motion's been made in second. And Mr. Ledweth?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Every year during the budget process, our directors in our Board of Education will make capital nonrecurring expenditure requests through the budget process. And we will, as a practice, reduce those requests as we move through the budget process and then make an appropriation later in the fiscal year when we know we have a surplus to fund CNRE. This year, we reduced the Board of Ed's requests by $300,000, and that's typically a practice that we do every year, as I said. But through this resolution, we would reappropriate their requests. $100,000 would be utilized for furniture to, that they will periodically upgrade every year in our schools, and then an additional $200,000 as we continue our upgrade of our computer equipment. So again, as I said, this is an annual process we go through, and this is a fairly routine annual request that we'll put on the agenda later in the year for the Board of Education. So through you, Madam Mayor, happy to answer any questions that the council had.
Thank you, Mr. Ledweth. Any comments or questions? Okay. Then we will go to voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Letter G, Mr. Winogre.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to adopt a resolution authorizing a distribution from the CF Morway Trust Fund to purchase golf carts for Buena Vista Golf Course.
Second. Motion's been made in second. And Mr. Ledweth?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This resolution would allow us to purchase four golf carts, golf carts, for our Buena Vista nine-hole golf course. This year particularly, we had a number of requests that actually made it to my office for additional support at the Buena Vista Golf Course for particularly some older adults and folks that had limitations in terms of moving around the course. So this will allow our Leisure Services Department to provide these golf carts at the Buena Vista Golf Course for our residents to take advantage of. We would utilize $12,450 of our CF Morway Trust Funds. We're allowed to use interest income from those trust funds on anything that's recreation-related. So through you, Madam Mayor, happy to answer any questions that the council had.
Thank you, Mr. Ledweth. And again, Ms. Poland, I don't know if you want to mention anything, because this was in your committee?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think Mr. Town Manager explained it very well, and this will be a benefit to everyone who uses Buena Vista, and particularly those with mobility issues.
Thank you. Were there any comments or questions? That's a great use of funds here, so I'm sure it will be appreciated. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Letter H, Mr. Winogre.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to adopt a resolution appropriating grant funds awarded under the Congestion Mitigation and Air Quality Improvement Program.
Second. Motion's been made in second. And Mr. Ledweth?
Thank you. The town of West Hartford applied for and awarded, and was awarded, 20,952 in grant funds from the Federal Congestion Mitigation and Air Quality Program, funds that are administered by the State of Connecticut, Department of Transportation. The town was one of 10 towns to be awarded this type of grant. This grant is to help offset eligible costs for the purchase of an electrical, electric vehicle and associated charging equipment. This purchase supports the town's commitments to sustainable, clean energy future by improving efficiency and reducing emissions, and ongoing commitments to a sustainable, clean energy future, as outlined in the town's energy plan and declaration of a climate crisis, by improving efficiency and reducing emissions. The town will appropriate funds to offset the cost of a new electric Chevrolet Equinox, which will be used by the Department of Plant and Facility Services as a daily driver for between town and school buildings. The new Equinox will cost approximately $50,600, of which $18,600 will be funded by the grant, and the balance of the purchase price will be covered by existing appropriations in the West Hartford Public Schools' general fund budget. Big thank you to Catherine Deviney for her work on this particular grant, and through you, Madam Mayor, happy to answer any questions that the council had.
Thank you, Mr. Ledweth. There is also a lot that happens behind the scenes, and Catherine is often at the root of a lot of really clever and creative grants. So any comments or questions? All right. Voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And then we will go to letter I, Mr. Winogre.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to adopt a resolution appropriating American Rescue Plan Act grant funds.
Second. Motion's been made in second. And Mr. Ledweth?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As we approach the December 31, 2024 deadline to contract the remaining funds from our original $37 million ARPA grant award, I'm pleased to present the final appropriations plan. These allocations reflect our commitment to addressing critical community needs and ensuring federal guidelines. All funds must be expended by December 31, 2026. The remaining $2.9 million will be allocated as follows. We will appropriate an additional $1 million to our Affordable Housing Development Program to continue to strengthen our current development program and help address the growing demand for affordable homes. We'll appropriate an additional $175,000 to provide financial assistance to 10 nonprofit agencies that serve our community in critical ways. This includes WHCITV, Noah Webster, Playhouse on Park, Interval House, West Hartford Community Theater, West Hartford Symphony, West Hartford Women's Corral, Sarah Whitman Hooker House, West Hartford Pride, and the Underground Teen Center. $125,000 will be utilized to hire an ADA consultant to assess and guide necessary upgrades to all town facilities, ensuring the facilities are accessible to all residents and fully compliant with Americans with Disabilities Act. We'll appropriate $130,000 to Public Works for the purchase of food scrap drop-off stations to support our upcoming food diversion efforts, upgrade all of our four EV charging stations in town, two here in the Town Hall parking lot and two at the Arapaho parking lot. And as we discussed in FNA, we did apply for a EV infrastructure grant through the federal government. We're hopeful to receive that grant, but that grant would not go towards existing We would also purchase a utility vehicle for our garages and lots to assist with some of the various projects that are taking place in both of our garages, as well as our parking lots. We would appropriate $700,000 to comply with the state's requirement to perform air quality study in our elementary schools. This is required every five years. This process has started already, and the largest cost to this study is in the first year of the program, as experienced by every municipality around the state. But this will allow us to perform that study and continue to upgrade the air quality systems within each of our elementary schools. We would utilize $75,000 to provide a trail from the University of St. Joe's parking lot to our Miracle League Fields and Ballfields at 1700 Asylum, as we discussed earlier. And then we would have an additional $455,213 for existing projects that the council's already made appropriations for, that we came up short during the bidding process to complete these projects. So $97,948 would be appropriated to the center infrastructure project. That would include the wayfinding portion of that project as well for both the center and Blueback Square. $8,932 for police body cameras, and then $52,526 for pond restoration aeration projects that's being completed through Leisure Services, and then $295,805 for accessibility improvement, which includes the bridges at Westmore Park and Spice Bush Swamp. And then finally, we would have $240,788. ARPA does allow us to make an interagency transfer to public safety only. So we would be able to allocate, appropriate those funds to public safety and would be able to correspondingly reduce the... their CNRE requests for the upcoming year, which would result in a savings. So these final appropriations reflect our council's commitment to addressing both the immediate and long-term community needs. We look forward to working with the council to move towards implementation of all of these projects. And through you, Madam Mayor, happy to answer any questions that the council had.
Thank you, Mr. Ledwin. And so I just want to pause here for a minute because this was a very unique situation on the heels of COVID to have an allocation of American Rescue Plan money. And Mr. Davidoff was actually very involved at the initial receipt and then distribution and decision-making of the money, of how we distributed these resources to our community. It feels like a long time ago, but it really isn't that long ago, and a lot of work has been done to determine how best to invest in West Hartford, not just to serve the immediate needs of the community, but the future needs. And I want to thank Mr. Ledwin for tremendous work with staff in identifying projects that really were helpful to the future, are helpful, as we will see, to the future of West Hartford, and will make an impact for a very long time. I also want to give a shout out to Matt Hart, who was very instrumental initially in this process as well. It was an incredible opportunity with an incredible responsibility. So we're really are proud with the transformational ways that West Hartford has utilized $37 million in American Rescue Plan Act funds to really make our community better. These investments have not only addressed immediate needs, especially initially where we were responding to a health crisis and an economic cliff for many people. So those two things really factored in very early with more strategic planning down the road. But it really did lay foundation for a stronger, more inclusive, and more sustainable future for West Hartford. And it's been reflected in some of the recognition that we've received and the panels that we've been a part of and discussions we've had with state leadership. One of the most significant accomplishments has been the addition of $6 million and now an additional $1 million to launch our Affordable Housing Development Program, the initiative helping address one of the most pressing issues that not only we have, but communities around the country, but that is to ensure our residents have access to safe, affordable housing. We also have dedicated 1.3 million to a small business and nonprofit grant program, recognizing the critical role that these organizations play in our local economy. We've touched hundreds and hundreds of businesses. These funds have enabled them to recover from pandemic-related challenges and continue their invaluable work for our residents. Through this program, we provided essential support to many nonprofit organizations that serve our community through direct service and continued advocacy as well. We invested, or are investing, $10 million in the renovation of our West Hartford Town Center infrastructure, which will revitalize the heart of our community, ensuring that remains a vibrant, safe, and welcoming place for all residents and visitors for decades to come. We continue to allocate ARPA funds to support our Vision Zero Action Plan, which will transform the safety of our roads for all users. And finally, we allocated $3 million toward architectural costs for our new state-of-the-art and region community center. The center will be at the hub of recreation, learning, connection, and benefiting all residents for generations to come. These project and so many more are a strategic use of ARPA funds. They meet our immediate community needs and, again, invest in our future and our long-term goals. I want to thank my colleagues, our staff, our local businesses, and the many nonprofits whose partnership has been critical to ensuring that these funds make a very long-lasting positive impact on our community. Thank you. Any comments or questions? I don't know if Mr. Winograd, because many went through his committee through the years, so I appreciate any input.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I can't follow that. That was very well put. I can say ditto a lot of that, of course. I'll just say that I just want to thank Rick again for guiding us through this process. It's certainly a big responsibility to spend, you know, to spend this money. And certainly the rules early on about what could be used, what this could be used for, what it couldn't be used for, corporation counsel, again, lots of help getting this done the right way, and I think we've achieved it. And I just want to thank, you know, thank you for, you and your staff for getting us through this process. And I will say I'm very happy to look at the spreadsheet and finally see a zero at the bottom.
Thank you, Mr. Winograd. Are there any other comments or questions? Oh, Mr. — okay, Ms. Walters.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and through you. No, I just wanted to reiterate and also call out the affordable housing portion of the funding. It is something that is probably the admiration of many communities, not just locally, but around the country that know about it. I personally have mentioned it to a number of people, and they don't believe that we could have done such a thing. And I think it was a great use of funds. And as you said, Madam Mayor, it helps create a more inclusive and open community. So that is one thing that I just really did want to call out and acknowledge. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walters. And while I have the mic for one more minute, I just want to give a special shout out to Patty Lewis, who really, again, this was a very, it was almost like the, it was uncharted territory, and we had to figure out how best to follow the many, many regulations that came with this and determine how best to account for things, do necessary research. It took an enormous amount of time and effort, and I just want to thank her very much for her leadership on that. So, all right. If there's nothing else, we will go to all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all. Letter J. Mr. Winograd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to adopt a resolution setting the compensation of the registrars and deputy registrars of voters.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Mr. Winograd, do you want to summarize this, or do you want me to prefer the Town Manager to summarize and you make comments?
Town Manager can start off.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ledwin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This resolution before you will adjust the salaries of the registrar voters who are, as we know, elected officials, and our deputy registrars or voters who are appointed. These salaries have not been adjusted since 2012. These critical roles ensure the integrity of our elections, voter registration, and compliance with state and federal laws, all of which have grown increasingly complex over the years. In addition, the implementation of early voting requirements in Connecticut have further expanded the responsibilities of the registrars, requiring additional planning, staffing, and management to ensure secure election operations. As we know, we are coming off an election where our early voting efforts were lauded by many around the state as the benchmark in terms of how to run an election. We talked about in our Finance and Administration Committee meeting, there were dozens of articles written during that early voting process over that two-week period, many of which commented on what was happening here in West Hartford. And if we weren't specifically mentioned in the article, then a picture of our auditorium was in the article. And that's a reflection of the efforts of our registrars and their commitment and dedication to running the finest election possible. You know, here in West Hartford, we were second in the state in terms of early votes cast. We fell behind Norwalk by 500 votes, a city that has another 25,000 residents, I believe, more than West Hartford. So again, a reflection of the leadership within our registrar's office and their management of the staff that's required to run this election. So certainly, we applaud them for their continued efforts and what they do for our community. The registrar's salaries would increase from where they stand now at $30,000 to $47,500, and then our deputies would increase from $15,500 to $20,000. There would be a 2.5% cost of living adjustment for January of 2027. In addition, we would provide a $5,000 stipend for both rolls in 2025, January of 2025 and January of 2028, and a $2,500 stipend for both rolls in 2026 and 2027 to reflect the added responsibilities of early voting. The elected positions would be also eligible for our deferred compensation plan whereby the town would match dollar for dollar their contribution up to 6% of their salary. So that summarizes this resolution, and I think a reflection, again, of the importance these roles play in our community. And through you, Madam Mayor, happy to respond to any questions that the council may have.
Thank you, Mr. Ledwin. I'm going to go to Mr. Winograd right now because he's chair of that committee, and go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So this, we have been talking about this for a while, and it was recognized that the salaries were too low for our registrars. And while it appears, if you look at it just on the numbers, it seems like a big increase. It really isn't. We mentioned the inflation, you know, that we have 12 years of no raises. So just on that alone, obviously, it would be a chunk of money right there. In addition, there's extra work. Laws have been changing, most prominently, of course, is early voting, which we brought in this year. There have been other changes as well. Same-day registration has gotten bigger. Other restrictions, you know, rules from the state are constantly changing. The educational piece, the training of our workers. The job has gotten harder and harder, and the old salary we were doing was simply not adequate. This is a job that has to be done by a resident because it's an elected role. So it's not as if you can go out into the marketplace and try to hire somebody. We need people, you know, locally committed, who are willing to do the work. We've looked at comps from other towns you mentioned in committee earlier, other cities paying considerably more in some cases. And if all those factors together really justify almost all of this, or even perhaps even if you go even higher, of this increase. And then the kind of smallest factor is one that sort of feels the most important, even if it was a small factor, which is the incredible job they're doing. So this is, you know, there's not a lot of merit pay in this. This is justified. This isn't just a bonus to people who are doing a good job. But they have been doing a great job. We all know that it's a job that gets little attention when things are going right, and a whole lot of attention when things go wrong. And we haven't had that. It has been quiet, but incredibly efficient. And anybody who did the early voting this year, you walked in and it was just amazing. It was incredibly well-run. You just walked from one station to another of smiling people, moving you very efficiently, you know, down the line. And you got to vote, and I know there's just sort of a hesitation on early voting, that, you know, you kind of like to go in on Election Day, but the efficiency of this just was awe-inspiring. And I just want to express to our registrars, we completely respect the work you do. We appreciate it, and we're proud. I do kind of want to recount on Norwalk. I know we were leading in that race for a while. I'm a little concerned about that count, but, you know, I thought we were going to beat them. But really, this reflects a small part of the appreciation, I think, we all have for your work. So thank you for your continued service, and I certainly urge my colleagues to support this really well-deserved and earned increase. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winograd. Are there other comments, questions? Okay, Ms. Fay.
Thank you very much. Yeah, you know that I'm a fiscal hawk, and the things that I've gone along with tonight and approved happily were the right things to do, and a lot of them involve grants. This one, it's about fairness, and 12 years is a long time to go without a pay adjustment. I did want to say, though, that they are part-time jobs, and once we approve these, that's forever. So they will keep rolling forward, and the expense is something that we've got to live with for here on out. So I just wanted to mention those comments because this will impact the budget in the future. And obviously, now it's going to, it's going to cost us more than what we're expecting. But I will say it's about fairness, so I don't normally approve additional spends, but this one I will support.
Thank you, Ms. Fay. Mr. Cortez, did you have?
Yeah, so I'm probably going to repeat a lot of the stuff that my colleagues have already said on the table. You know, so voting for me is extremely important. You know, I've been doing it, you know, I've been dying to vote since before I was 18. This is huge. Some of the words that, you know, the Town Manager said, you know, it's critical. They do this with integrity, right? There's the compliance piece, right? A lot of elected positions, you know, take lightly. But in this situation, if things are not followed, they will be plastered on the news, you know. If you look across the country, there has been other towns, and even in our state, that, you know, have had issues. And in West Hartford, we don't. But we have a high voter turnout, and we don't have, you know, issues. It gets done efficiently. That integrity, again, is important, right? Secure elections. And then, you know, let's talk about inflation. You know, it's been a while. So that alone, you know, our minimum wage is $18 an hour. That's a, that's a huge impact. We're feeling, we're feeling that right now in Connecticut, and that's not going away. So this is definitely long overdue. And when you look at the range, you know, 45 to 60, so we're in that range. It's good to see that we're in that range. Our ROV has pivoted during COVID, right? We've had, you know, a huge increase with absentee ballot during that time, and how do you handle that? And they've done that well. So the increase of, you know, absentee ballot, early voting, you know, there is a cost to the communities with early voting, and this is what we're seeing now. So yes, we're going to own this forever, but, you know, it is about fairness. And I want to thank, you know, the Finance Committee and the Town Manager for kind of, you know, taking it, you know, the bull by the horn for the past couple of meetings and making sure that we, you know, we right this wrong, right? And, you know, get them, get them a raise, you know. And I'm impressed that with all the moving pieces and the numbers you guys came up with, you know, it's more, you know, it's the adding to the matching with the defer comp and all that stuff. You know, I don't love the number, but, you know, what is the right number? And, you know, again, we own this too. So you got to be very careful picking a number. So I just want to thank everybody who's worked behind the scene to fix this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cortez. Any other comments or questions? Ms. Blanks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I just really want to say to the leadership, because we always talk about our outcome, but we know it's not done in a vacuum. And when you have awesome leadership, leading a team of people to have things run smoothly, especially when we all know it's chaotic, and we're dealing with a budget, and then you're dealing with all these other things that sort of are thrown in at the last minute that wasn't planned for. And I think you executed it beautifully, especially with COVID. And it seems like after COVID, things just kept coming through like a tsunami, and you handled it with grace. And you have volunteers. You have to train those people, talk about compensation, but also do it with a level-headed, level head, and also with grace. And you both exemplified that. And when you're leaders, you set the tone for everybody else. And I know often during that time, you're not given that applause, or you're not given that grace, but you're being pulled upon. And I think what the committee and this council is doing today is really giving you your flowers and acknowledging that we value what you do. So I will be supporting this. And I just want to thank you both, as well as your team, for everything that you've done and also what's coming. All right? Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Blanks. Ms. McInnes?
Through you, Madam Mayor. I just want to say, before I was on council, I was responsible for finding people to run for registrar for one of the parties. And, you know, it was difficult with the current pay structure. We got very lucky with the person that ran and was elected and just re-elected. But I think this increase is very important to keep people in the office who are qualified, doing a good doing a good job. And as our town manager or as our deputy mayor said, you know, we don't, we want to be in the news for high turnout and more early voting, not anything negative to do with voting. And the people we have in office have done a really good job. So I just want to thank them and say that I will be voting for this increase.
Thank you, Ms. McGinnis. Mr. Sedanovitz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I think, I echo all of my colleague's sentiments and I don't want to repeat too much. I think there's a few of us here that remember when this really wasn't always a smooth-running operation in the past and it, it was sometimes difficult from the past. And we don't have that anymore. And it's, again, very well-run. And I actually voted early for the first time on the last day and it was, it was a great experience. I think people outside of kind of this close circle may take some of the registrar voters for granted at points because they really don't, maybe not know what they do, but we do. And I can certainly say we appreciate your hard work and all the efforts that you've put to, for this town. Again, just to kind of reemphasize that the things that we are hearing about the voting here in West Hartford are all accolades. It's, there's nothing negative and that's a great thing. It's kind of what this town kind of generates all the time, you know? We do lead from the front often. So I applaud you for that and I will be supporting this going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Sedanowitz. So I just want to also just add, everybody has said so many wonderful things and they're true. And I just want to say how grateful we are, all of us, how grateful I am that you reflect the best of West Hartford. You are so much of what people see and that, the most important civic right is to vote and you made, you make it accurate and, and accessible and reliable and all of those things are incredibly important and incredibly appreciated. Elected office, government work, sometimes people don't get paid their worth and, and that is the way it's structured. But I want you to know that we are very strongly supportive of this adjustment and I, I, you know, you probably deserve more. I know you deserve more, but it's, it's all a balance and I hope you can appreciate those, those difficult hurdles that we have as well to balance all that we have. So thank you for your commitment to our community because every person that you serve is a customer and you get that and you are all about that customer service and I appreciate you very, very much. And with that, we will go to a roll call vote. Congratulations, all those in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much and congratulations on a little bump, a little, a little, I loved what Ms. Blanks said, a little flowers. That was great. All right, we go to letter K now, Mr. Winograd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to adopt a resolution authorizing the town manager to participate in a grant program to support the preservation of the Revolutionary War campsite.
Second. Motion's been made in second. Mr. Ledwith.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This resolution will authorize the town manager to execute a grant from the State of Connecticut, Department of Economic and Community Development and the Historic Preservation Office that would allow us to engage a qualified archaeologist, archaeologist, archaeologist?
Archaeologist?
Archaeologist.
Okay. It's been a long day. Archaeologist.
To complete a survey report of a Revolutionary War campsite located in West Hartford by the reservoir on Albany Avenue. It was the site of a 1778 encampment of Continental Army soldiers during the American Revolutionary War and a hospital camp for a short time after. It's now listed on the National Register of Historic Places in 1986. There are three public and two private owners. The public owners include the Metropolitan District Commission, the State of Connecticut and the town of West Hartford. The project receives funding. Property owners will be invited to an informational meeting about the project and to get their permission to be on-site. Little bit of background on the site, as early as 1775, this camp may have been used by the West Hartford militia from November 15th to November 21st in 1778 under the command of General Israel Putnam. As many as 800 Continental soldiers slept at a camp north of Albany Ave, west of Mountain Road. This camp used for a short stay for General Putnam's troops on their way from the North Meadows to Danbury, soon became a hospital camp staffed by a surgeon and provisioned in large part by the citizens of the West Division of Hartford. The soldiers who stayed at the Revolutionary War camp left no permanent buildings. In 1974, archaeologist Roland Robbins, struggling with that word, located 200 scattered stone fireplaces. The new research that will be completed as part of this project includes the role of the West Division of Hartford militia at the site, a more definitive timeline, a timeline of occupation, detailed information including an expanded understanding of the role of women, Native and Black participants, detailed information on the participation of West Division townspeople in supplying, supplying, provisioning and supporting military units, and definition of the battleground boundaries through current archaeological method and assessment of integrity. Do want to thank our town historian, Tracy Wilson, Chuck Corsi, Mary Donahue, our town planner, Todd Dumey, and Assistant Superintendent of Schools, Ann McCarron, for all of their work in identifying this grant and the work that is going into this application. We did discuss this during the Finance and Administration Committee meeting and through you, Madam Mayor, I would propose a substitute to the resolution. There is a $20,000 limit that's included with this grant, so we would propose adding language in the now therefore be it resolved clause under the third sentence where it would say, "All documents necessary to apply for and receive the grant in an amount not to exceed $20,000 if offered." Through you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ledwith. So we are going to go to Mr. Winograd to make a motion on the amended.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to amend the resolution for purposes of adding the $20,000 item.
Just to clarify, you mean cap, right?
The $20,000 cap, right.
Second.
Motion's been made in second on the amendment. And so we're going to vote on that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now back to the actual resolution.
And now I'll move to, move to adopt the resolution as amended.
Motion's been made in second. Is there, are there any comments or questions on the resolution itself? Ms. Pollan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you, during the Finance and Administration Committee meeting when we discussed this, I will say this was the first I had heard that we had a Revolutionary War camp in town. So I think this is really cool and I just wanted to let the public know who may also be learning about this for the first time, that once we do have the archaeologists identify the borders and everything with the camp, we will probably be back here at this table figuring out how do we educate visitors around what was there, why, and, and how it will be used moving forward will be a topic for a future council discussion.
Thank you, Ms. Pollan. Any other comments or questions? All right, I also want to thank all of those involved in bringing this forward, Dr. Wilson, Mary Donahue, Ann McCarron and Todd Dumey, all of those that have been, that have been involved in this. And thank you, Mr. Ledwith. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Now, we actually, if you have seen the agenda, there are a lot of appointments and this happens at this time of year where there are a lot of terms that expire. Thank you so much, bye. That expire and a lot of people are being appointed to, to new commissions. We are taking those on consent, but I want to give a little extra shout-out and thank you to my colleague, Ms. McGinnis, who helped comb through a lot of resumes and help organize appointments to our, our commissions. It is a very cumbersome process. I think some isolated individuals and counselors have helped me in the past, but this was a big one and I appreciate your assistance, Ms. McGinnis. So if you're interested, it will all be on the website. And we will go to reports of the town manager, Mr. Ledwith.
Thank you. I'll begin with some upcoming council business for next week. We will be holding a in-person Community Planning and Economic Development Committee meeting on Wednesday, December 18th at 8:00 a.m. That will, that meeting will conclude with a tour of the new West Hartford Fellowship Housing Project over on Starkville Road. What do they?
Is it a tour first?
Is it a tour first?
Yes, we are going to meet at, for the tour at 8:00 a.m. and then followed by a meeting.
Thank you for that clarification.
Sorry about that. It was back and forth.
And then, as I emailed you last week, we do have to be here on December 19th at 5:30 p.m. here in the council chambers. We will open the public hearing for 1800 Asylum Avenue and we will continue it to a future date. So I'm hopeful that by next Thursday, we will have the date of the public hearing. It'll probably be the latter part of January, early part of February. I'll begin the town manager's report with some, a weather alert. Unfortunately, we do have a strong cold front with heavy rain and sustained south winds expected to impact our area through Wednesday evening. The heaviest rainfall and strongest winds with gusts of around 50 miles an hour are expected to occur from tomorrow afternoon into the evening and may cause localized power outages. Traveling may be challenging tomorrow night. Residents are urged to secure any outdoor holiday decorations that the wind could blow away. In anticipation of the storm, a flood watch has been issued for Hartford County. Please make sure leaves and leaf bags are not in the street. Leaves can cover the top of catch, catch basins and exasperate flooding issues. If a catch basin near your home is covered with leaves, please remove them and please stay alert for updates and changes to the weather forecast. Earlier this month, the Department of Public Works installed a blue light parking van notification system on the traffic control mast arms at all key signalized intersections along Farmington Avenue. This is not uncommon in neighboring communities, but this is a first for us here in West Hartford and will be a valuable tool for our snow and ice control winter operations. Here's what you need to know. When the blue light is flashing, a parking van is in effect. On-street parking is prohibited. Avoid parking on the streets during this time to prevent fines or towing and to ensure smooth snow removal operations. Parking vans are implemented to allow our crews to clear snow and ice from curb to curb. When the blue light is off, on-street parking is permitted. Leaf bag collection will end on December 20th. December 16th through the 20th is the last week of the annual leaf bag collection. Leaves accumulated after December 20th must be brought to the yard waste and recycling center or stored until the spring yard waste collection resumes in April of 2024. The rest of the report is online for folks at home to view. And that concludes the report this evening. And through you, Madam Mayor, happy to answer any questions that the council had.
Thank you, Mr. Ledwith. Are there any questions for town manager? I'm going to go to Mr. Walters first and then I'll go to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and through you. I just wanted to confirm that also on December 19th, there will be a Public Works Committee meeting.
Yeah, we have to, we should talk about that.
Okay.
Yeah. Because we, well, we could do it in person, I suppose.
Okay.
Yeah, because it's 5:30, we'll have, we have to be here at 5:30 on the December 19th. So I was going to talk.
So we'll discuss.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
But we could, yeah.
Okay. All right. Mr. Sedanowitz.
So, thank you, Madam Mayor. So like any good loophole, understanding the December 19th meeting, is there a announcement that we could make to the public saying that it's moved so that we don't have to come in for three minutes to, to postpone that meeting? And what's the legalese and the loophole behind that? We can do that instead of coming in person?
Oh, so that sounds like a.
Your question.
Deputy Corporation Counsel question.
Through you, Madam Mayor. There really is no loophole to get around it, so you're required to open the public hearing by a date certain and that's why you have December 19th. You do have to open the public hearing and continue it to another date. So you're not rescheduling, the legal term is open and continue.
The question I think is, can we do it virtually? And I think because we said it already on our agenda for a certain date and time and place, we can't. But I, that's, I don't, I don't know.
There lies the loophole because agendas have to be set. Isn't it so many days before? So if we, that's where I'm, we have time to rewrite an agenda.
Sure, absolutely. So the December 19th is a special meeting and if we haven't posted the agenda, we can identify it as a virtual meeting if the council is so inclined to conduct a virtual meeting. Even if it has been posted, we do have the ability to revise it and convert it to a virtual meeting as long as it's done no later than 24 hours. And actually, the town clerk prefers 48 hours for posting the agenda.
The, I know it is on our, it's posted and it's on our, on our documents. So, and because we said it and voted on, we're voting, you know, to, to hear it and vote on it at a specific place, I didn't know if we had that flexibility. Did you have a question?
To Corporation Counsel, we've put a legal notice for the public hearing on December 19th and it said that the hearing would be held in this venue at that said time. So I don't think that we could switch to a virtual.
That's fine.
Through you, Madam Mayor. I'll take a look at that. There are requirements as to how far in advance you could post a legal notice, so I can work with the town clerk to see if there's an ability to do that, but good point. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so we will find out whether it's possible or not for us to do a virtual option for that meeting. And if, if we can't, we need a quorum. So we just have to make sure we have a quorum. And what if we didn't have a quorum? I'm just curious.
Well, there's two things scheduled for that night. There's a public hearing scheduled and then it's followed by a special town council meeting. So you technically don't need a quorum for a public hearing. There's nothing in their charter and ordinance that require it, but it's been the past practices of this body to actually have a quorum before starting a public hearing. You will need a quorum to open the special town council meeting. A quorum of this body is six members.
And is there a, I see that there is a posted time for the start of the public hearing. Is there a posted time for the start of the council meeting?
There is a posted time for the start of the council meeting, but oftentimes we just go through and pass that time in the course of the public hearing. But there's always a posted time.
Well, that's my point. I think if we don't need a quorum for the public hearing and we do need a quorum for the council, what time is the town council meeting set to start on the 19th? I don't know if we.
I don't think so. So I think we would do that when we open the public hearing. We would, I just, well, you'll, you'll let me know.
Yeah, I see what the goal is here and there's a.
I know a lot of people.
People have to coordinate that with, so I will take a look at that.
Okay, thank you.
It's not on.
Right. I didn't see one, so, okay. All right, so.
Immediately.
All right. So you will let us know on that. Any further questions, Mr. Sedanowitz? Okay. Okay. Any, any other comments, questions for the town manager? No? Okay. Then we will go to Corporation Counsel's office. Ms. Ferrano?
Madam Mayor, I have no report at this time.
Thank you so much. Any questions for Corporation Counsel's office? Okay. And then we will go to announcements and there's a few. Congratulations to Bugby School. U.S. News and World Report released a number 14th on the 2025 best elementary and middle schools in Connecticut and the nation. According to the rankings, Bugby School is Connecticut's ninth-best elementary school. It serves 371 students in grades K through 5. Bugby is tied for number three in reading proficiency and number 14 in math. More than 79,000 public schools were ranked on the state and district levels based on the. More than 79,000 public schools were ranked on the state and district levels based on publicly available data from the U.S. Department of Education. The Governor's Prevention, congratulations to Bugby. The Governor's Prevention Partnership Honors in Prevention will also take place on November 14th. This is a, an award to West Hartford Public Schools Mentoring Program, the Champion of Youth Impact Award. This groundbreaking mentoring program, which began in 2001 with just two adult mentors in two schools, has blossomed into a dynamic and impactful force. It now serves 16 schools, engages 150 dedicated adult members, and 40 to 50 peer mentors for K through 12 students. What sets this program apart is its commitment to personalized mentorship uniquely designed to meet specific needs of the student to help them thrive. West Hartford is among the nation's most sustainable suburbs. In a survey of 3,000 participants nationwide, Solar and Shore asked them to name green suburbs and neighborhoods they would move to for an eco-friendly lifestyle. The result is a curated list of America's top 120 most-desired sustainable suburbs. The common, the community, I'm sorry, these communities offer the charm and amenities of suburban living and prioritize green initiatives, energy efficiency, and a commitment to reducing their environmental footprint. Three Connecticut towns have made the list, Fairfield #26, West Hartford #70, and Glassamary #76. West Hartford's extensive green spaces, parks, walkable town center, reduced car dependency were among the factors for its selection. It was also noted that West Hartford promotes green building practices, recycling programs, community events focused on environmental awareness, and local food production from community gardens and farmers' markets. And I'm, there will be much more to follow. Hall High School choral layer singing telegrams will run this season through January 1st. This is an award-winning select choral group that has prepared a repertoire of classic caroling tunes, sorry, and songs with a modern twist. Performances are $50 for 20 minutes and $60 for 30 minutes, and there is a link on our website. Applications for Parent Leadership Training Institute are being accepted. This is also known as PLTI. This free in-person 20-session program combines advocacy, leadership, and citizenship skills into a curriculum that fosters children, the best, that fosters children's best interests. Meetings are held Wednesday evening, 6:00 to 9:00, beginning January 8th through June 4th at the Family Resource Center at Charter Oak School. Program offers free childcare for school-aged children four, four years old and older. It's open to parents, grandparents, guardians, or people who live or work in West Hartford. If you have any questions, contact Kathryn Dean at the Bridge Family Center. Ugly Xmas Center musical will be on, at the Playhouse on Park, December 4th through 22nd. And these ticket ranges, 25 to 55. And this is blending comedy of the style of the office and the competitive spirit of Project Runway. Sounds like a lot of fun. West Hartford, a public police, actually, or the police department are doing a toy drive on December 11th and 17th, 11 to 2 on Wednesday, tomorrow, at West Hartford Target Store, and December 17th, 10 to 12 at, at both, at both the Target. Thank you. West Hartford Women's Choral Concert will be December 13th at St. James Episcopal Church. Starts at 7:30. Tickets are $15 at the door. The 11th Annual Greater Hartford Holiday Book Drive will take place at King Philip Middle School. And Aiken School Collection Boxes Bowling for Books will be held on Sunday, December 15th, from noon to 12:30, I'm sorry, noon to 2:30, at Lassard Lanes in Plainville. Habbad House Fire and Ice will take place on December 29th at the Town Hall Parking Lot, correct? Because there was some signage otherwise?
Town Hall Parking Lot, yes, Madam Mayor.
Starting at 3:00 p.m. And there will feature Hasidic rapper and singer Nassim Black, Fire Department's Great Grand Hanukkah gift drop, and trackless train rides. If you have any questions, please call Habbad House or visit fireonice.info. Amazing Adventures of Doctor Wonderful and Her Dog will take place January 21st through February 14th at Playhouse on Park. And more to follow on that. STEM-based, family-friendly adventure musical is geared towards K through 4, grades, yeah, and is truly enjoyable for the entire family. That's all I have. Are there more announcements? Mr. Cortez?
Thank you, Madam, Madam Mayor. So, through December 30th, so West Hartford United Methodist Church will continue their diaper drive through December 31st. They'll be collecting diapers especially, sizes four, five, and six. Pull-ups, wipes, feminine hygiene items, toothpaste, toothbrushes, razors, shaving cream, soap, shampoo, conditioner, shower gel, deodorant, and other related items. Single-box tissues and single rolls of toilet paper are also needed. And then, starting January through March, they'll continue the food drive. But that being said, food insecurity is a 365-day issue. So, if you do have food items, you can drop them off there, and we'll make sure it gets to the food pantry here as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I just want to thank Rotary and Saint Peter Clavier for making significant donations to our food pantry this season, really helpful as well. Any other comments or announcements? Yes, Fay?
Just a shameless plug for PLTI. I was actually the inaugural, I was a member of the inaugural class in 2012, I think it was. I forget. I think it was 2012. So, I'm pleased that the program is still continuing. It is very beneficial. You do learn a lot, and if anybody has the time, I would encourage you to do it.
Terrific. Any other comments? All right, Mr. Sedanowicz?
I always feel left out at this time, because I just want to go home. But, so, we haven't had a sports update, and Ronnie was kind enough to write an article about it. The cross-country Division 1, 2, and 3 races took place on national level, and we had actually four alumni, three from Hall and one from Conard. MIT came in first place, and we had Kate Sanderson come in first for MIT and win it in the Division 3. And Nora Holmes was running for the University of Chicago. They came in second in Division 3. And they were both teammates and at Hall together. And Chloe Scrimmacher from Conard, and someone close and dear to my heart, Jenna Sedanowicz ran in the Division, the NCAA Division 1 tournament, and both for UConn and Georgetown. Yes. So, big show for, for alumni here in the Division NCAA Championships.
Thank you, Mr. Sedanowicz. And that's really impressive. Congratulations to all of those runners that have achieved incredible status. Anything else? All right. And with that, I think we are at the point where we're wishing everybody a happy, healthy, safe, joyous holiday season, and we will see you in January. But really, take care and be really mindful of there's multiple users on the road. Make sure that you drive safely and walk and cycle safely as well. All right. If there's no objection, I make a motion to adjourn. Any objection? All right, we are now adjourned. Thank you all.